69th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. Please rise as Vice President Laura Toye leads us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Tonight's meeting will be a voting meeting and the meeting minutes for this evening will be approved on Monday, June 5th. Ms. Nash, will you please take the roll?
Vice President Toye, here. Councilmember Donavick?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember McCullough?
Here.
President Jolly?
Present. We have five members currently here this evening. Kathleen McIntyre is the council representative to the city's pension board and she is away on city business, attending the MAFERS conference. So that is an excused absence. Mr. Barr is currently at a child's sporting event and will be here shortly. So we should have six in no time at all. I will now entertain a motion for the minutes of the May 8th regular meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Donavick, support by McCullough. Are there any additions or comments on the meeting minutes from the council? Any additions or comments from the audience?
No.
Okay. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Vice President Toye?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The meeting minutes are approved. At this time, the council has set aside 30 minutes for the audience to communicate directly with the council. Each audience member has up to three minutes to address the council on any items that are not on the agenda this evening. Mr. McCullough will be taking the time here and we'll get started, sir. Your name and address, please.
Christopher Martin and the great state of Michigan.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay. Just a little curious as to, I thought that clock was a really good idea and it did help people that were talking look at their time and rather than being abruptly cut off, although I know Brandon wouldn't do that to me, is that, that's right, the, I think it was a good idea. Is it broken?
It is not broken, but as Mr. McCullough is not normally the one who uses that, it takes a little bit of practice.
Well, I wouldn't be able to use it at all then if it didn't.
I just paused that time for you. Look at that.
Okay. All right. Well, I just got a couple of things I'd like to talk about. I noticed this at the last council meeting, but many times, city officials use that podium over there. And I would like, not only the city officials, employees, but also the petitioner. When the petitioner stands here and there's a crowd of his supporters, it's hard to come up in opposition and try to scoot these people out of the way. So I do believe that that would be a good idea to have the petitioner over there and overhear citizens, whether they be in opposition or in favor of something. And then when their two minutes are up on an item, they can walk away and the petitioner is not standing here doing one of these. But something to think about. Couple of weeks ago, in Old Rosedale, a guy was walking through the neighborhood circulating petitions, not petitions, but a flyer. And one of his relatives with dementia was missing. And he had been looking, him and his family and friends had been looking for quite some time. I don't really know the outcome of that, but at the end of the day, I did look up, there's 12 different devices, GPS devices, for tracking people with dementia. And I think that would be something for the committee of the whole to at least think about. Some of the requirements I would want to put on it was no one in a nursing home because the people that run the nursing home and you pay your money to should be watching the people. But people who wander off and you have to have a doctor's note. Okay? Uh-oh. Am I, is my time getting? I can't see that far away.
Fifteen seconds.
Fifteen. Okay. Is that, I think that's something we should think about before there is a, something sad happened. So I'd like that to go to the committee of the whole so we can at least talk about it. If we can give raises to some of these people that are employed by the city, then we can certainly look into that. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else from the audience? Good evening, ma'am. Your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Kieta McKinney. I am with Congresswoman Rashida Salib's office. I am here this evening just to extend greetings from the Congresswoman. Unfortunately, she cannot be here this evening. However, I just want to come up and introduce myself. I actually serve as one of the Congresswoman's legislative caseworkers. I service the Livonia area and so I just want to make sure you all were aware that I was here, as well as I am also here to support the constituents and offer any type of constituent services needs that may be current at this moment. I wanted to also note, we have three offices in the district. We have one located in Southfield. The other is also located in the city of Detroit. And we also house in constituent services office, I'm sorry, in Inkster, Michigan. So I will go ahead and leave a few cards here for this evening. Please feel free to contact our office. We can be reached directly at 313-463-6220. And again, my name is Kieta McKinney and thank you for your attention this evening.
Thank you very much. Anybody else from the audience? Going once?
Oh.
Excuse me, Mr. Smith. So I, I will not use up any time from the audience at this point, but through some great work of Ms. Sarah Kasparitz and our DPW workers and our Livonia TV people, we now have a disability platform back there for people to be able to access who are in wheelchairs and of the such. And I guess it's an honor and very fitting for Mr. Smith to be the first person addressing us from that.
Well, I feel honored.
Your name and address, sir.
Yeah. First thing I want to do is...
Can you tell me your name and address real quick?
Yeah. Daryl Smith. My address is 14006 Brookfield here in Livonia.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And I'd like to start by thanking my lovely wife for all the work that she does taking care of me and helping me get here to these meetings. She's the best thing that's ever happened to me. I just want to take a minute and say that. So I also want to thank you all for this platform and this microphone because, as you know, I quite often have something to say and hopefully this wheelchair is not a forever thing, but until it's gone, I can still have my say. So I appreciate that. Beyond that, I'd like to say that I particularly want to talk about the Noble Library. It seems to me that it's such a shame that that building, which is one of the classiest buildings in Livonia, it's really a classic building. It's a world-renowned architect and I've never heard of a building being destroyed simply for mold. I've talked with some architects and they say, that's not what you do with mold. You don't just tear down a building. So I'm part of the group of people that is trying to make people aware that that Noble Library doesn't deserve to be hit with a wrecking ball, but that we need to find a way for that to continue to serve the people of Livonia. So I'll be saying this for as long as that building stands and then I'll have to change my spiel, but I, 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 yeah. The idea of a neighborhood library, one that's close enough so that children can walk to it, is critical, particularly in the summer when the schools are closed. I think there's nothing more touching than a third grader that would walk to the library with their parents to get a book in the summertime. So, you know, it's a beautiful thing when young kids love to read and some, some in my family have had reading difficulties and so the ones that can read, they just catch fire when they realize how wonderful books are. They take them places that they otherwise couldn't go. And so a library in the south side like that would be so important for the people that live down there. That's my point. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the audience to address the council?
This is open.
This is open. You do? Your name and address, please.
Katie Rogowitz, 16067 Alpine Drive. I wanted to discuss the issue of golf carts. They've been an increasing problem in the neighborhood, especially Burton Hollow. Brandon, I know you're aware and Jim, I know you're aware, as well as you are also a member of the Burton Hollow Swim Club. The swim clubs, I believe, are allowing people to bring the golf carts onto the property. Golf carts are illegal in Livonia. According to MCL 257.657, Paul, I'm sure you can attest to this, only cities and townships with less than 30,000 people can create a variance to circumvent state law banning golf carts. We do not fall under that. We're at well over 90,000 people. That said, golf carts need to be dealt with. Unfortunately, a lot of people don't seem to know or acknowledge or even care that they're illegal. Confusion could be created because obviously the police department recently posted pictures with Chief Karowski posing with people in the streets and sidewalks, driving their golf carts. So I don't know if the chief doesn't know they're illegal, doesn't care they're illegal. I don't know. We won't make assumptions, but that does cause conflict as to people seeing the pictures posted. Well, the chief's doing it with those people, they must be legal. It's not. I almost hit some kids driving it the other day. They were 10 years old. They drove up a curb onto the sidewalk because they ran a yield sign. So there's, there's just a lot of issues with that. I think also people, they tend to come to swim clubs, drink all day with their kids and then they leave and they probably think they won't get a DUI if they're on a golf cart. Also not true. You can get a DUI operating a golf cart under the influence of drugs and alcohol. So it's a safety issue, especially like the other night, I see this guy down the street, whizzing down the street in a golf cart with his two little kids, roughly six and seven, hanging off the back, not even set, not even seated. Okay? So I just hope it doesn't have to take an injury or death before something happens. I did contact my swim club. They just completely ignore it. I think that they're willing to allow the golf carts onto their property even though they are illegal. And like I said, it's just, it seems to be an issue now that it's not just adults driving it improperly, it's little kids. So my concern is, you know, someone gets hit, they hit me, whose insurance covers it? I don't know if their golf cart has insurance. You know, I mean, obviously if I accidentally hit them, they can't sue me because they're not even supposed to be on the road in the first place, which unfortunately if someone got injured, that could be catastrophic financially for them. So I just, I think these laws are in place to protect people and I think that it needs to be dealt with. Because I, in fact, just on the way here, someone was tooling down Farmington Road in a golf cart and a police car just went the other way. So obviously, I don't know. I don't know if it's something that it's all in who you know or it's something they choose not to enforce, but like I said, I would just hate to see something bad happen. But it's become an increasing, like, problem. Like it used to be more, not so much, it was mostly adults.
10 seconds.
Okay. But now it's getting to a point where I think people are knocking back boos and driving with their kids hoping not to get a DUI. So I'd appreciate it if maybe you guys could possibly get on the police department to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Toye, we're going to wait until, if you don't mind?
No, I don't mind. I just want to make a comment.
Is there any other audience communication might be very quick here for you? If there's no other audience communication, we'll go to the council and we'll go to Vice President Toye.
Thank you. I would like the matter looked into on the golf carts. I have an increasing number in my little neighborhood just across the way here and it is aggravating and sometimes you don't see them. And believe it or not, you just don't see them. And they're young kids in a lot of instances driving these golf carts. So I would like Livonia PD to sharpen their pencils and look up these laws. As you alluded to it, there's a state law, it sounds like, an MC, whatever it was, so that we can get the word out to our residents to be safe and be safe on our roads. If we could, Mr. Chair, I'd like that to go to the police department as well as our city administration, our mayor and that venue of things. Appreciate it. And report back in about two months if we could, if not sooner.
Are you...
I'm directing, I'm making a motion.
You would like a formal motion?
Yes, please.
I'll support.
Okay. We have a motion by Toye, support by Mr. McCullough. Is there anybody else on the council who'd like to add to that topic? I see none. Anybody from the audience in regards to that referral to the administration for reporting recommendation? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote on that.
Vice President Toye?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. So the matter will be referred to the administration. That is a formal resolution from the council asking for information. I've always found Mr. Burney, you're very direct here. Paul, as our city attorney, can you just look into this as well?
I'll be happy to.
Just through conversations with the appropriate people?
I'll be happy to. Pretty much what Ms. Rogowitz said, though, is, is right on as the state of, the state law. But we will definitely look at it.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Any other comment from the council? Mr. Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. President. On Thursday, May 11th, at Larry Knee Hazel Park right here next to City Hall, the city of Livonia and residents and families all got together to honor and remember Livonia's fallen police officers. It's the ninth annual Livonia Police Department memorial service. It is to pay our respects to the four police officers that the city of Livonia has lost throughout our time. We also, Chief Karowski also extends to other departments, agencies throughout the state of Michigan for any of the officers that have died in the line of duty in that calendar year. So there was a lot of families there, a lot of city officials there. Larry Knee Hazel is a beautiful park. A few city council members in the past, most recently Kathleen McIntyre and Brandon Kritzman played critical roles on that, making sure Larry Knee Hazel Park was built after the line of duty death of Officer Larry Knee Hazel. I know councilperson Scott Morgan was a police officer for many years in the city of Livonia and knew Larry Knee Hazel and some of the other officers maybe. So it was just nice that the city continues that tradition to get together and pay our respects to the officers that have dedicated their lives to our city and unfortunately passed away in the line of duty. So thank you to Chief Karowski and all the people that make this event an annual event for the city of Livonia. That happens every single year. Just a note, the keynote speaker this year was Master Sergeant Dominic Frida. He's a Livonia resident, served in the Marine Corps, retired from the Marine Corps. So it was nice to hear his story and his connection to the city of Livonia and thanking our police officers as well. Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Donavick. Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, I'd just like to, found this on my desk, I'd like to thank Margaret Earl for putting these together and reminding us that on a Saturday, May 27th, at 9:00 a.m., at, there's going to be a Memorial Day ceremony right here on the corner of Five Mile and Farmington Road honoring all our veterans and it's for the Memorial Day remembrance ceremony. So it'd be great if you show up there. Really appreciate it. Be there with, be there and with the other council members, hopefully. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Anybody else from the council? Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. Last week, well, actually last weekend, Livonia was, not that it doesn't change, but it always has something going on. Friday, we had Clearanceville's reverse raffle. The room was packed, more than, they came out and said it was the most attended event that they've ever had, raising some good money for the Clearanceville Foundation. Saturday, there was Anastasia and Katie's Car Show, which is a great play, a great business that definitely, if you haven't been to Anastasia and Katie's, I know they're at Merriman and I believe Seven Mile. Check them out. It's a great organization, does great for the community. There was also the Rotary Club Wine Pole that was at Rotary Park. We had the Livonia Firefighters Union Bowl-a-thon, happened in the same time. Following day, I know we had the Livonia Youth Choir and I believe Livonia Civic Chorus had two, two events. So there's always something going on. I know my colleagues touched base on a few things that are coming up, but always something cool. A lot of kudos to all the service clubs that we have in this city. It gives us something to do. So kudos to them and if you see this, please support all of our service groups. It's one of the great amenities we have in this city. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Vice President Toye?
Thank you. I would be remiss if I didn't remind Livonians that and others that the Spree will begin on the 20th of June. So get out your pennies and your quarters so that we can ride some fun rides and of course the fireworks we'll have this year. Some of the best around. And we do have a very active board on the Spree. Councilman Morgan is also there as well in support. We both serve on that at the pleasure of our President, Jim Jolly. So we've worked very hard. Every Thursday, we have meetings, more than we'd all like, but it takes a lot of volunteer hours and anybody wishing to volunteer, we're in need of volunteers, whether it's pouring beer, pizza night, any of the things, please get ahold of us and we will more than likely welcome your help. One of those, what is it, six days? We operate seven days out of that week. And it's, you'll find it very worthwhile. And driving a shuttle, that's always fun. When people have a lot of fun, it's even more fun. So come on down to the Spree and I'll be announcing that again in the near future. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Toye. Mr. Barr?
Just want to wish my wife a very happy anniversary this Friday, 21 years and hoping for many more.
Congratulations.
Mr. President?
Didn't you already have your turn?
I just wanted to point out to Councilman Laura Toye, I don't think the Spree accepts quarters anymore. It's 2023. It's mostly credit cards and whatnot, so. Don't bring quarters to the Spree.
He means like Venmo and cash.
I think she said pennies as well.
What's Venmo again?
Yeah, we actually have some drama in our house because we're scheduled to have a baby on the opening day of Spree and my kids are not, not at all thrilled to miss any moment of Spree for something else, even if it's... Okay, so I just want to reiterate real quick. The city's Memorial Day celebration, as Mr. Morgan stated, will be Saturday, May 27th, at 9:00 a.m. at the corner of Five Mile and Farmington Road. And the music will be performed by the Livonia Civic Chorus. Many of our veterans groups will be there along with some representatives of police, fire, other city elected officials, and most importantly, residents wishing to pay their tribute to our fallen soldiers. So please make sure to come out to that and share that solemn tribute with us. With that being said, we will go to our agenda this evening. We do have reports from the mayor and other city officials, a communication from the Department of Finance dated May 1st, 2023, forwarding various financial statements of the city for the month ending in February, on February 28th of 2023. Another communication from the Department of Finance dated May 1st, forwarding quarterly investment reports for the city of Livonia, ending February 28th, 2023. And a third communication from the Department of Finance dated May 1st, forwarding departmental purchase reports for the month ending in, ending April 30th, 2023. With that, we will move to the consent agenda this evening. The consent agenda tonight is items 1 through 10. Those items were previously studied at the May 8th, 2023 study meeting and found to require no additional study and will be voted on as a single item. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion from Vice President Toye, support by McCullough. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to comment on the consent agenda, items 1 through 10 tonight? I see none. Ms. Nash, will you please take the vote?
Vice President Toye?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The consent agenda passes. Moving to unfinished business. Item 11 is a block party request from Nicholas Scott to be held on July 2nd, 2023 from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Ohio Street between Maryland and California with no rain date requested. Can I have a motion for my colleagues?
So moved.
Support.
We have an approving from Toye, support from Morgan. Is Nicholas Scott or anybody else here from this block party? Mr. Scott, come on up to the podium real quick. If you don't mind, tell us some details in regards to what you plan on doing for the block party here. We always like to hear from residents for this sort of thing, to know what kind of fun you're going to be having and all that kind of stuff.
Sure. It's mostly going to be kid-friendly, kid-based. This is our eighth year doing it, just our third year in Livonia, though. We barbecue, it's just a party, water slides, the whole nine, then we do little fireworks at the end.
Okay.
Yeah, that's pretty much it.
And this is a neighborhood block party?
Yep. So I kind of, we just moved here last year. So I went to the neighbors, my immediate neighbors, and just kind of invited them, told them what we were doing. They were all on board. So they're going to come down and at least ask.
And I'm sure you're going to get approved here in a moment. Don't be surprised if somebody shows up for free food.
Come on down. There's plenty of food. Plenty of food.
I just put it on the calendar.
All right. Is there any audience comments on Mr. Scott's block party request or anybody from the council? We have an approving motion. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Vice President Toye?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. You're approved, sir. Have fun.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 12 is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance coming to us from Wafa Barshini Festival Chairperson from the Basilica of St. Mary Antiochian Orthodox Church in order to host a festival with live music in the rear parking lot at 18100 Merriman Road on Friday, August 11th, from 5:00 to 11:00; Saturday, August 12th, from 12:00 p.m. to 11:59 p.m. and Sunday, August 13th, 2023, from 10:00 p.m. to, excuse me, 12:00, 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. I will note that we have new data for item 12 here. We have festival floor plans submitted by the petitioner and an email from a resident. Before we get to this matter formally, I'm going to hand the gavel over to Ms. Toye as the vice president here. I work for a law firm that has done business with St. Mary's in the past and actually items 13 and 14 also have to do with a client of the law firm that I work for, although I do not benefit in any way financially from any of these relationships. To avoid the appearance of impropriety, I'm going to step down on items 12, 13, and 14. Ms. Toye, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay. Pitioners, would you like to add anything? We're on a voting meeting, as you know.
The only thing we would be adding, Freddie Sackland, he has the St. Mary's Church.
Oh, pardon me. We do need a... I'll offer an approving for discussion.
Support.
We have, did you capture that, Madam Clerk? Yeah, you got that? Okay, good. Go right ahead.
The only thing we would ask you to consider in addition to what we discussed at the study meeting was, there was a mention of a decibel amount of 70 at the property line. And if that is what, if they were going to set a decibel amount, I, I'm not in sound, so I had to do a little research. A vacuum, if you Google it, is between 75 and 85 decibels. And when you go a distance of 140 feet, it drops about 10 decibels. So we, in theory, would be very close to be running a vacuum inside the music tent. I'm not asking for a lot, but I would ask you to raise that decibel number on the property line to 85 or 90, because that would allow us to have a reasonable size band inside the tent. I think a lawnmower is at 95, you know, so, and the problem is you only lose about 10 decibels from the one point. I'd also tell you that we already purchased four decibel meters to put that record data to put at every piece, every property line surrounding the church property. And we will be recording that data, so when we come back next year, whatever number you approve, we'll be able to give you a report that actually shows you the decibels at any given time of the day. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, no? The council? Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You were looking at 85 decibels? Is that what you were asking?
I am, yes.
All right. I don't have an issue, now, this is during the actual carnival. When it hits 11, I'd like to keep the, because I think we had it at 60 after the, after the closer of your event, you would bring it down to the property line at 60 decibels. So I kind of want to leave that in.
That's fine.
One of the questions we did receive from a resident was exactly what you just said, who's going to be measuring it. I appreciate you coming, you know, and being transparent, you're going to have decibel meters. 85 for everybody at home, I'm looking at this, you know, you kind of go from a 70 shows a passenger car, 80 is a medium truck. So I'd be happy to add the 85 decibels during that time if my colleagues are okay with that, and use that as a benchmark and a report going forward.
Your supporter agreed then?
I'm okay with that.
Okay, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Thanks to the petitioner for being here tonight, thanks to the residents, there's a lot of feedback on this item, understandably so. And I think the message is being sent clearly to Saint Mary's that while we want to support Saint Mary's, while we're thankful that you and Saint Mary's every year participate and have like a really beautiful function, the same, at the same time, the residents enjoy their peace and quiet as well throughout this weekend. So I hope that everyone understands that council is trying to balance here while allowing Saint Mary's to enjoy themselves and have a great annual celebration while also make sure the residents can, you know, enjoy their peace and quiet throughout the weekend. I'm okay with the 85. I, I hope and pray that you guys understand that, you know, next year, if this continues to be an issue, I can only speak for myself, but I'll remember this meeting and moving forward into the next year. So I think you guys do a good job trying to be good neighbors. I think the neighbors are trying to be good neighbors with Saint Mary's, but we all have to agree to kind of live together in harmony here. And I hope that these new decimal readers that you've bought, you know, you utilize them correctly and really understand where we're coming from, where the residents are coming from, and I believe you guys will. So I'm okay with the 85. I think that's reasonable, and I'm kind of looking forward to see how this goes. And I'm really hoping this goes successful for everyone included. So, thank you, Mrs. Vice President.
Certainly.
Anyone else, no?
Just a real quick question, as I read through, not to bring up another subject, but it was involved residents, obviously, again. During the day when you play music, background music, now, I don't know if people are getting oversensitive or whatever, or the wind blew that day loud, you know, whatever, I don't know. All I'm saying is there was a comment in the planning that said that that music was loud. Can you help me understand that?
You know, you guys, I, I don't understand decibel meters either, and I'm hoping when we put the decibel meter on the side of the property, I have really no clue what it's going to read. Today, we pulled it, opened it up, and if I turned it on right now, it might be reading 80 right now.
Okay.
So, you know, to be frank and honest with you, our goal is to get it low enough where the neighbors are happy with us and we're still able to enjoy and have a community event. And I feel like we're all on the right track. I, I'm hopeful that we won't have any complaints next year, and if there is any, you know, we'll look at the meters and look at the logs and perfect it. But I can't make everyone in the world happy, we can't, but we can certainly do everything in our power to try, and we will.
And you understand I'm talking about the background music, the tape music that you played during the day, right?
Well, the meters are going to be set all day, we're going to have security look at them. So if that background music for some reason is higher, you know, I, I, I don't, the band playing, the music playing, them putting on just radio system, you know, sometimes you're having a smaller event, they're not watching it as much. So we are going to track the decibels 24 hours.
Great.
And we'll keep it at the number. And if next year we come to you and the neighbors are happy and it was too low for us, we'll ask you to increase it. If next year we come to you and it was too loud for the neighbors, but 85 is where we were and you need us to lower it a little, we'll, we'll try to lower it a little. All I can tell you is it's a, it's a working event. I'm not going to tell you that I can't make everybody happy, and I'm not going to tell you I won't try to make everybody happy.
No, I've been on this council several times, obviously, and you've always come to us. We've, we've always tried to cooperate, both sides, and it's usually worked.
It always has.
And it always has. So we just want to keep peace and harmony as you're trying to do, and so are we.
Hundred percent. Thank you for your time and thank you for your advice.
Certainly, help, thank you for your help. Go right ahead, please.
For the chair to the petitioner, just the other thing that I wanted to bring up, because I probably spent a little too much time on it, but the biggest question that I, I think we learned with the decibels is, does it include bass? And I tell you what, I can't find a solid answer exactly on that. You know, the bass, I would just say, listen, if you guys can, that was a big problem that was brought up with the residents, with the shaking of the windows. Just watch that bass level, tell your, you know, DJs or whoever's doing it, just keep that bass down. I think you're going to have a lot of success. Thank you.
Thank you, okay.
Thank you.
Do you want to give us a date again of when your festival is, if you recall? Oops, it's real curvy right there, okay.
We took off Thursday, we supposed, we were planning to have music on Thursday, so we're not doing Thursday anymore. So it's going to be only Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Friday, from 5:00 to 11:00, Saturday from 12:00 to 12:00, I'm sorry, yes, from 12:00 to 12:00, and Sunday from 12:00 to 10:00.
And what month are you talking about?
This is August.
This is August, so everybody can get ready with their dollar bills then.
Yes.
Okay, great, okay, super. Anybody from the audience wishing to address this item? We're on item 12. Saint Mary's looking to do a festival in our community again this year. Please come to the podium and give us your name and address. City, state, your blood type, the whole bit. No.
City, state, Livonia, Michigan.
Okay, great.
My address is 31098 Bobbridge. My name is David Kuzing. One of the items that was brought up at the last meeting was the tear down of the festival happening during the night. It was a loud event Sunday night, it got tore down Monday morning, everything was gone. You didn't even know you had a festival. One of the concerns is that we could do the tear down during the daylight hour, we just follow our current noise resolution where 11:00 p.m. you have to stop the tools, stop the banging and knocking things around, because that did affect some people, because I'm only 500 feet away and we could hear it at my house with no problem. So that was one of the things. And the second one was, one of the people spoke about partying at the workers later in the evening, she was an adjoining property. If that could just be policed too, that'd be greatly appreciated, appreciate it.
We'll note that, and that'll, the message will go.
Okay, have a great day.
Certainly, thank you for your input, sir. Thank you. We, we can't hear you, you got to come to Mike, sorry.
I didn't mean to get back up.
No, that's all right.
We will tear down on Monday. We will not tear down on Sunday night. We always, as the festival got bigger, we started doing it on Monday. It was smaller, they tried to tear down on Sunday, not a good idea, they will tear down on Monday.
Okay, perfect. Thank you again. Okay, yeah, come on up, sure. Name and address, please.
Sure, my name's Caitlin Bellowitz, I live at 30528 Janine Street. I just wanted to kind of figure out, since we have this decibel limit that's being put in place, I just want to avoid kind of like a repeat that of what I got last year from the police department when I did call complaining about the noise. Is there any way that council can send like a memo to the police department to let them be aware of this decibel limit, so if people do call, they know why we're calling and what the expectation is for them to actually be enforcing?
Mr. McCullough has made this motion, and I'm telling you, he sits on those guys over there really tight, so.
So they will be receiving a memo?
So they'll listen.
Might be out there myself with my own personal decibel meter. But yes, the memo will get there.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, he's got it. No, no, we're, we're going to get ready to vote, so unless you want to delay it a little bit longer, because I was always taught if you got the votes, you'd sit down and be quiet, okay? Anyhow, is there anyone else? Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you. Christopher Martin. What I would like to see there is reserve police officers, not their own security. Two females, two males, the entire duration of the event. You can switch off people, because now you have somebody who's actually not on their staff, but you have independent people. These complaints to calls unresponded to, to the police department will be handled right there. You're looking at somebody in a uniform, say, hey, what's that meter say? So anyone who gets a little bit too rowdy, now you have a record of it. You don't have a record of anything with their own security. So that's just my input, thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you. Anyone else, no? Okay, Madam Clerk, I don't see anyone else from the audience, so, and no other councilperson, if you want to take the vote.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye, motion passes. Item 13, council, is a roll call vote as well. It's a proposed amendment to Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance as amended Department of Law to Petition 2022050101, submitted by Nofar Hotel Group requesting to rezone the property at 31501 Schoolcraft Road located on the south side of Section 27 from C3 Highway Services to C4 High-Rise Commercial. First reading was given by Councilman Donovan, and Councilman Donovan, that was on January 23rd. Would you like to go proceed, sir?
Madam Vice President?
Go right ahead.
I'd like to offer an approving, please.
Do I have support on the approval?
Second reading, second.
Oh, yeah, that's right, we don't need approving on second reading, that's right. I'm a little rusty, don't worry. Yeah, was there any other comments? No? Okay, and hearing and seeing none, anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing none, would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
No.
Vice President Toy?
No, motion passes three to two. Thank you. Item 15, or 14, excuse me, is also a site plan petition, Planning Commission Petition 2023030803 submitted by Nofar Hotel Group requesting to construct a four-story Stay Bridge Suites Hotel at 31501 Schoolcraft Road located on the south side of Schoolcraft Road between Merriman Road and Hubbard Avenue in the northeast quarter of Section 27. Your pleasure, council.
Madam Vice President?
Go right ahead.
I'd like to offer an approving, support.
Supported by Barr.
Madam Vice President?
Yes, please, go right ahead.
Thank you. I'll be in support of this tonight. We're taking an old dilapidated building, specifically the corner of Merriman and Schoolcraft Road area. It's been an old building, it's been sitting there for, for, you know, decades, on and off, been vacant. And we have a successful local family business that is going to essentially knock it down and build some brand new up, and they're going to spend millions and millions of dollars. They own another hotel here in the city of Livonia, I drive by it daily, it looks good, they take care of it. This family company, they, they care and about what they're doing, and I think it's going to be a huge enhancement for this corner. We're taking an old vacant blighted building that is susceptible to crime and all sorts of other things and investing millions and millions of dollars into it and giving residents along the freeway an option for a long-term corporate-style hotel. This isn't your traditional hotel you stay at that I go for a night. This is one of your more corporate-style hotel groups. So I think it's a good thing for the community and a good thing for a vacant building, so I'm being supportive of it. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Certainly, thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the council? Anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing none, would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
No.
Vice President Toy?
No, motion passes three to two. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and I will pass the gavel back to the president.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. We will proceed with item number 15, that's a site plan petition from the Planning Commission, Petition 2023030802 submitted by Four Winds Church requesting to expand the parking lot of the church at 318407 Mile Road located on the north side of Seven Mile between Merriman and Osmus Avenue in the northeast quarter of Section 3. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Support.
Believe we have a approving motion from Toy, support from Barr. Is there any comment from the council initially? I see none, any comments from the audience in regards to item 15?
Chair, I do have one question.
Go ahead, Mr. Barr.
Just, I just want to clarify that the resolution here, I was looking through the attorney notes, this includes their original plan of the narrower back drive, correct? Is, does Mark know that, or maybe the petitioner does, but?
There's not going to change.
There's not, okay. All right, that's what my intention was, or that's what I thought it was, and I just want to make sure, thanks.
Okay, if there's any comment from the audience in regards to 15, Four Winds Church, I see none. Ms. Nash, take the vote on 15, please.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.